We are now live on Facebook. If we can, we are, the Rackliff Work Session for Monday, February 7th, 2022. At 5:00 PM, the meeting is held here at Rackliff City Hall and streaming live on our Facebook page. If you will please rise for invocation or remain standing for a please.
I just pray. Father, we thank you for your abundant blessings. We thank you for today. We thank you for each and every council person here. We thank you for the mayor and our city attorney and all the department heads. Father, we ask that you guide them and give them the wisdom to make the best decisions for this city and to move it further. Father, bless our soldiers both here and abroad. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible).
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and your republic for which stands one nation under God and invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everyone to our work session. I hope everyone made it through the wintery mix this past weekend. Glad we didn't have the ice and everything that was actually predicted. But we had a little bit of, little bit of weather, but we do want to thank city, the city road crews, which is our public works department, just for staying on top of things and working through all that, as well as our Harden County Road Departments and all the counties, cities, road departments to help everybody get through and state especially and all of our main roads. So with that, we have several work item discussions today. This is going to be, Chance, you want to come up? So we have handbook, section 3.6.2 and sections 3.6.3. And this has to do with our pay plan that we had set up in the police and fire. And actually, just looking at that over the past several months, talking with department heads and doing follow-ups, we've been working on this, try to get some kinks worked out that we had set up. And so basically what some of the council members as well as have instructed us to do and look over these plans, we had the word cap that was used on those plans. And so what we were doing is basically having to go back and look and seeing what that actually defined as. So you all should have a copy of that report where there's several lines that are being struck through. And we'd like to change that to retirement eligible date, which basically means we have some employees that will retire or can retire at 20 years. We have some employees that can retire at 25 years, that they would be based in the new system. So what this would allow us to do is just take everybody to their eligible retirement date and take the word cap off. And that's what one of the suggestion of changes are. Chance, you want to add to that before I go on to the next thing? Are you good?
As far as that.
Yeah. Okay. So what that does is, and this is where some of the hangup came up. We obviously have people that are retirement eligible date, which means they're at their 20 years. And they're still, I would say young, but they're still young and would like to stay, I use the fire department as an example, we have a couple of those guys who are lieutenants that are at their retirement eligible date, which is at 20 years. The word cap was put on there, which means they can no longer exceed whatever that number was, whether it was 70,000, whether it was 69, whatever the number was. Well, what we're suggesting is remove the word cap and then give those folks the opportunity to get a increase after the cap, and that would just be a thousand dollar flat rate. So that, that's where that discretion, so that's where it's open for discussion, what we're talking about.
Just to add to that.
Is it on?
So the steps.
Doesn't sound like it's on, is it?
Push it up.
The steps are already, you know, the steps are already, as you all know, in the pay
plan. That's already been approved. And those steps are a percentage, and that percentage is the same from year one to retirement eligibility year, whether it be 20 or 25. So what the mayor is proposing is that, obviously, that section of what we're talking about, would the steps go away upon retirement eligibility, and then it's just a flat amount. So irrespective of what your salary is at the time of your eligible retirement date, it's a flat amount.
Any questions? Majority man. And that would just be an adjustment to that. It's only going to affect, it's only going to affect, there's only several people that it'll affect. Is that correct, Chance?
That's only going to affect currently, yes, obviously, you know, we don't know how many people will extend their work careers as a result of the change, but currently, I think there's maybe three or so that would affect, maybe three or four.
The only comment I would like to add is, because I've been following this too, and I know we have been working on this a little bit, and you have been too, for a few months, once we first proposed this, we talked about that before as far as the caps and there was a little bit of, not really confusion, but some adjustments, as the mayor said. But in looking at, and I know I'm good with what you've got here as far as the thousand dollars upon their anniversary hire date, but we're using the one and a half percent. I know things are subject to change, but with the inflation being at like five or seven, is that really, I know right now, maybe this is, this will be working fine, but I'm talking about, we might two years from now have to look at something else, or three years, or maybe even every year we may have to look at something else, because one and a half percent is not staying up with the times, with inflation.
Yeah, and that's, obviously, that, the way that this pay plan is written, just as we're making some adjustments now to what was done in May, that is a, that is a very simple change. So, you know, the council very easily at some point could say the one and a half and the two may no longer be relevant, and we need to adjust that. So, I mean, that can be done easily, of course, at any time.
Yeah, and the one thing, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I wanted to add that too, and I know Councilman Yates, and I don't know if you want to jump in, Chris, but the compounding rate is what we also discussed. Do you want to, I'll let you take, because I know you brought that up, so.
Well, I was just looking at it, and when we passed the last budget, we passed it to where the one and a half and two percent did not compound. And I just felt like in order to stay competitive, that we would need to compound it, so.
Yeah, and so just to add to what you said, just as an example by doing that now, it gets a little more difficult when you try to figure out what that impact is for someone who starts on a non-command position and moves up through the ranks, because you have those 10% pay jumps for each command position that's built in there. But for example, when I reran those numbers on that copy that you have, what the compounding, if you allow compounding, what that does basically is like if you looked at a 25-year police officer who never gets promoted to sergeant, but is a 25-year career officer, and I use 25 because people that are hired ever since 2008 are now under a 25-year plan instead of the 20. But instead of them being at a 57,120, it goes to 60,039. So simply removing the compounding, you know, it's almost, it's another $3,000 over the term. So again, not a lot of money over the term of 25 years, but it obviously does make a difference there, as well as for those that get promoted, there's going to, that compounding really will make a little bit bigger impact.
And like, right now, the way it's currently set up is just based on the flat across the board.
Right, so if you're making, if you're a $42,000 entry level police officer, you take one and a half percent of 42,000, and whatever that figure is, it's like $630, something like that, that's what they would get at year one, and that's what they get currently under year 24. It's fixed, because it doesn't, the interest rate doesn't compound. So in year two, instead of being 42,630, and then, you know, you, you don't get the full benefit, it's still the benefit on 42 instead of on the 42,630.
That's, that's in the both hazardous departments, so both police and fire would see that change.
Thank you. I'm glad, I mean, thank you, I'm glad that we've looked at this and we're working through this and, looked at this and looked at this, and yes, worked and worked on this. So I appreciate it, and Chance, I appreciate it, because this really makes a lot more sense for our fire and our police.
Yeah, we definitely think, I know several you all have brought things up, I know several things have brought to you guys. Obviously, it's just, it's a changing document. There's obviously things we're trying to get right, things we need to fix, and other these would come, some of the items that we had to address. But we can put this on the agenda, and it would just be a change of that handbook section, removing those strikes that you all see on the pay plan, and then removing the word cap, to take it to your eligible retirement date, and then the compounding.
So sir, will we be able to, or do we, when we make these kind of changes, do we kind of look at what the impact is in recruiting or retention, I would say, for someone where it wouldn't, really wouldn't make a difference, and they leave at their 20, or they leave at their 25, versus taking the annual 1,000 and saying, oh, I'll stay 20, I'll stay to 21, I stay to 22? Do we ever look at it that way, or we just, we get what we get? If they stay, they stay, if they don't, they don't, after they reach retirement eligibility?
One of the things we looked at, and this was something we discussed, was basically at typically, our passage usually would give the one, well, I think one and a half to maybe a 2% cost of living annually. So when we looked at that, if you have a, and I'll just use one lieutenants that's on top of my head, it's at 1%, obviously, it's $700. So if we give a one and a half percent, so we kind of figured that thousand dollar mark was kind of a round number to use, knowing that they would be guaranteed that, and then they're also guaranteed a certain percentage throughout their career that they would receive, versus it is our non-hazardous employees, that basically the only increases they see, because we don't have that merit system set up that way, would only be based on that cost of living given that, that typical year. So obviously, this past year, we gave 3%, while we continue to hope, based on what even Councilwoman just said, want to give a higher percentage. Sometimes it may be one, sometimes it may be two. So this way, at least the hazardous duty know, guaranteed that they'll receive that thousand. Yeah. So that was the mindset, if that makes, yeah.
Even if you had that career officer who never promotes up, and he were to retire at 60,000, and decide to, you know, if you started going at 21 and wanted to continue working, you know, that thousand dollars actually is more than 1.5%, you know, on 60. So, so it actually like 1.6 or 1.7%. So, but then on other years, depending on where you are, especially in your command position, you know, that thousand may be kind of a happy medium on what we've done in the past, as the mayor has said, so.
All right. All right, we'll move on. Chance, you want to stay here for the next one? So this is strength table. If you remember at the time, I don't know if Chief, you out there? Jeff, I guess I should probably determine which chief. Both y'all come running in here at one time? Jeff, you just want to have a seat there, just in case we got to have any questions. Ultimately, if you remember at budget time, we had scaled back on the police budget when it came to personnel. Now, we didn't want to take away officers. What we basically were doing was we looked at the overall scale, we were, we were at 40, and we, Chance went back and looked, and we determined that, how often did we ever reach that 40 mark? What happened was we were budgeting those dollars for officers that we never were filling. And so we wanted to shift that money to other areas in the budget, and then actually come back, as the chief scaled that, those personnel up, get to 35, and then we said at that time we would come back and say, okay, we're at 35, we'd like to add one or two more officers, and then proceed forward to try to get back to 40. So that's why we're, we're discussing that on the strength table. So right now, we're at 35. And so now, and I'll let you talk, Jeff, if you want to, about where we're at in the train, or the hiring process and where we could be and.
We're at 35 currently, and.
Hey, he may want to slide up there, let him. Pick it straight up, just pick it straight up.
No, it's actually underneath, actually the one.
I understand it, I understand it.
Hey, you sit there, hey, go ahead and sit there, he's sliding.
We are at 35 now, we just got back there. And that's with, still, we got two guys that got about three or four weeks left in their PTO training, and we got a lateral that finally came in, and we get, they got about six, eight weeks to go through that program. So the issue now is that we have paid out a lot of money in overtime for the last year due to numerous things, being short. You dropped to 35, and for a while there, we were down like 30 and 28 guys, or 30 with two in the academy. So it made it really difficult, we realized, COVID going on, we paid out a lot of money for COVID overtime, for, you know, people taking on, the last couple of weeks there, we had 15 or 16 people out at different towns, but every time one or two was out, we was having to pay overtime to cover for them. So it's, it's just been difficult, and like the mayor said, when we were at 40, it seemed like we were always at 36, 37, 38. So when we went to 35, it seemed like we were at 30, 31, 32, which makes it difficult. And we, we feel like if we could get back to the number 40, and if we're ever down one or two or three, it's not quite as bad. So we went ahead with the hiring process this year, and we've gotten probably six, maybe eight, really great candidates in this process. Now, there are a couple, three of them that are in process, other places too. The academy, right now, there's three classes left this year, one in March, one in April, and one in May, and then there's not another one until August. So it takes 34 weeks at a minimum, from the day someone starts the academy, for them to get through all the training with the academy and the PTO course, for them to come out and say that we can count them as a body, and they don't have to have somebody else So, you know, at 20 weeks in the academy, and right now, the class in March, April, and May are all full, but I've had a conversation, and the academy is trying to, and a lot of places are facing it, not just us, trying to, let me know, Chief, we'll try to squeeze one or two in, in a class here or there, if we can, to try and help you all out, to kind of get ahead. Like I said, if a guy walks out today and you don't replace him until tomorrow, it's a long time. So we're trying to get ahead a little bit. We got one guy that's retiring March 31st. We got another one that's advised he's going to be going out August 1, and then one possibly in October. So you can see how this snowballs. It takes five minutes to walk out the door. It takes nearly a year to put somebody back in their place. Now, that's, if you get a lateral or two, it helps. But, you know, I'm not saying this about everybody, but it's really difficult to bring people in, at the time you get them all checked out, and make sure they don't have any baggage that you don't want. And of course, a new person could bring baggage too, but it just, so what we try to do this year is, is try to get some laterals in. We hired some of them on that retirement program. We got, I think, four of those, we're allowed five, but we got four of them, where you don't have to pay benefits in on them. So we did get some retirees to help us out. If it wouldn't have been for that, we'd really be, that number that I was talking about, 28, 30, would be, you know, raring us over the head right now, still.
But ultimately, we're, we're at the 35.
So we're at the 35 right now, but that's with two guys, no, that's with three guys that are still PTO-ing. So really, our number, body number, or head count, when somebody comes to work, we're still at 32.
So do we have any attrition rates at all in the academy, Chief, that affect us, or we pretty much get what's coming in the door, makes it through, and we get them on the other end? Do we get any that just don't make it through, that affect us number-wise?
You talking about, after they go through the academy?
When they're at the academy? Do we lose any attrition at the academy?
Yeah, well, we've lost officers that have made it all the way through the academy, and they come in in our PTO program, and we realize, or they realize, sometimes they realize, this isn't what I thought it was. You know, I just can't do this. Or we realize, and we talk with them, and I don't think this is for you. And sometimes that happens. We've, we've had, over the years that I've been here, not many, but there's been a couple here and there that that happens with.
So you're fairly confident on that March 31st, one is retiring?
Yes.
And then August 1st, is that?
Those are two for sure.
For sure.
And one possibly in October.
So what, what, so each, for each new body that we put, and that's 42,000, but with everything, and depending on the health plan and everything, of course, if they get average, what, Chance, 70?
For an annual, for a new hire officer, possibly the city, that's about 70,000. That'll include car, that'll include uniform stuff, gun, but that's, that's.
I think we did the math, about, it's about 90,000. This is what we did back in 19. Tell me, I'm talking about on the road, fully dressed, but, so what we had been working on, and what Chief and I had been talking about, and of course with Chance, ultimately, you guys want to know, can we afford, what can we afford, how many can we afford? And so I told Jeff, I'd like to, Chief, I'd like to get them about 38 right now, to kind of scale up. We'd like to go ahead and get at least two, go ahead and try to get at least two, possibly three, of these new hires in the academy. Go ahead and see if he can work them in, knowing that we're going to have one leaving in July?
July.
July. We know that's going to be an opening, and then the other one is going to be a promotion up for someone, probably within the department, with a lieutenant leaving. That will leave us another patrol officer down, because everybody scoots up. So we know that funding could be there. We predict, Chance and I both think that budget next year can absorb, we'll have some costs coming out, and it depends on when Jeff thinks he can get these people in the academy. So if it comes back, the commissioner says we can get them in May, April, or, or, excuse me, March, April, May, then we know how much money we need to budget, which will be fine in this current budget till June. In July, obviously, that impact's going to be 160,000. And then with that one officer leaving, we know that, that percentage will be covered. Ultimately, that'll give him, what, 37 to 38?
38, that would bring 38.
Yeah. And then we'll just have to figure out those next numbers to scale up.
So if he was only going to hire three, and there's 35, and two's leaving, that would just put us at?
37.
Six.
37, if he hires three. Once, I'm using, I'm not talking about body, I'm talking about pay, the, how much we can afford. Because I'm using that one as an opening, when, when leaves.
So your goal is not to get to 37?
Goal, I'd like to be at 38.
So for 35, and two's leaving, that takes us down to 33, and we hire three, that's 36.
No, no, I'm talking about.
Am I confused?
No, no, for this budget, uh-uh, no, for a July budget, if you go, till we get to the end of June, I'm going to try to get him to get those three in. Once he gets those three in, I know in July, Bob's body will come open, like that, that position will come open. Then we can try to scale one more, but I don't know what that budget yet looks like. That's what I'm.
So we don't lose these? We would be at 38 with three in the academy. So, well, we got one in the academy now, but we would be, we would be at 38 strength table with three in the academy, if I get this right now. For a brief amount of time. Then, then in, on July, on August 1st, you lose one, so then you have to hire another one.
Yeah.
To get it back to 38.
That's what I don't.
And then if somebody left in October, you'd have to hire another one to get back to 39.
Kind of what I told.
Because we go back to 37.
Well, Jeff, I'd like to see what, what, if we know that we can afford at least these three, which I think we can based on the dollars, I'd like to see what our budget looks like June, with the predictions will be for next year, to determine what we can afford then. Before I just come back and say, hey, can we get another?
Speaking of budget, we going to have that this, next Tuesday?
Yeah, we can do an update.
Yeah.
We're good.
Well, I want to see it.
We're good.
I have a question.
We're good.
Chief, you was talking about sometime when the officer get there, did they feel like that this job is not for them, and you are also, at that point, if they leave, then we're kind of starting over again?
That's right, that's right.
So then, what is the cost that we are losing at that point to send them to the academy, and then they come to that point that on either side, they realize it's not?
You generally lose, what we try to do is hire someone a couple of weeks prior to them going into the academy. That's, that's the norm. Get them orientated here, and get the things they need, and so they go in the academy, and you spend 20 weeks, so you're about 22 weeks pay that you lose if they come out. And, but you're got a little more in that, because generally, they don't come out of the academy in the first week of PTO, and we don't give up on them that easily. We try to give them the benefit of the doubt and coach them, and try to get them, do the best we can to get them to make it. But it's, it's sometimes that goes on, it may go 14 weeks, and they're at the end of their PTO program, and the PTO coordinator, just, and the guys that are training them, just finally say, we've tried, we've tried, we've tried to get them to, to do this, but it just, it's not going to happen. And we've even extended them sometimes to give them the benefit of the doubt. We don't, we don't just give up on them. But sometimes, long before then, it might be the fourth weekend, it might be the sixth weekend of the 14-week training, that they say, I just can't do it. Now, if there's someone in the academy that's failing at that point, and again, they try to get them through too, but if they go in, into one of the programs at the academy that they have to, you know, firearms qualification, driving qualification, all these, all these trainings are tested, and they have to prove themselves, and sometimes, if they don't make it, you know, they, they have to leave while they're in the middle of the academy.
What is usually the area that get them the most?
Here, when they get back with us?
Yeah, PTO or the academy.
Well, in the academy, it's usually one of them officer skills positions, firearms, driving, something that requires hands-on, you know, handling calls. Sometimes it's academic testing, but we haven't seen a lot of that, to be honest with you. Now, when they get back here, generally, it's, it's officer safety issue, or a safety issue for the public that finally, that it comes down to, that we just can't take the risk of cutting somebody loose that may be a danger to themselves at their job, or a danger to their fellow officers, or the, or the public.
So can I, I just want to clarify, if we have three new officers, and you're saying it's 71,000, but with everything else, it's about 90. So you're looking at 270,000, right, to get the three officers to add? And your timeline?
We're not buying, we'll take it back, we're not buying new cruisers.
Right, but that's just their pay scale, though.
If we were to look at what one officer costs, you know, the taxpayers, so just their pay is about 70, then you put them in their uniforms, their guns, all that stuff.
About 90. So we're looking at about 270, 270,000 to add to the budget, and your timeline to get those three is by March or April?
Well, there's, there's a class in March, there's a class in April, and there's a class in May. All those classes are full. But the academy has indicated to me that they're willing to work with us, and I'm sure they're working with other places too. So time is of the essence for us to say.
So, and then what was it you were talking about before, and maybe, maybe I'm going to mess this up a little bit, but you said whenever we get a new officer, this was the last time we talked about the officers and things, you have to, they have to ride with somebody or do certain things, so you're really, they don't really get to be the full-time officer anyway, so we're still, does that really affect you or affect anything as far as your, your strength table, how many officers you have, because you've got new ones riding with somebody else?
Yeah, your, your strength table, we may have a strength table of 40. Let's say we got 30 officers in our patrol division, which is what we, you know, with all the supervisors and everyone. So you got 30 officers in that patrol division, two guys have just, or there's, they're down two, because there's two in the academy. So for 20 weeks, you're, you're just empty, two people. So they graduate, they come out and they're riding, now they got to ride with a PTO, police training officer, for 14 weeks. So I can't count them as a body. So if somebody calls in sick, I can't take one of them and fill that slot with them. They have to have the training officer with them. So you got two, two units in one vehicle, but you're going to count them as one.
So that's why I just wanted you to kind of clarify that, because that still kind, that still takes time for us to even really still build up the department, right?
It does, it does.
The way that you can spread them out. I just wanted to make sure I was remembering that from the last.
And that's what I feel is important, if, the sooner we can get them, we're a little more ahead of the game than, than we will be if we wait till somebody walks out the door, and then.
And someone still could leave in the middle.
Well, they could, yeah.
So it's always an heaven.
This is a, this is a really competitive field, and, and, you know.
So you try to take them and put them in a cruiser with another officer for a couple weeks before they start this training, to kind of give them a feel for what they're getting ready to go into, or are they strictly in the office?
Well, it depends on how long they're here. Now, we, we've hired in the past, we've hired some people, a few years ago, we hired four or five of them, that might have been six. We had to hire them three or four months out, because we were going to lose them if we didn't. And the academy didn't start till this date, and at that time, they weren't squeezing anybody, you know, the class was full, it was full. So, and, and it's kind of difficult, used to, I could call and say, hey, give me two slots in the. So, and, and, and it's kind of difficult, used to, I could call and say, hey, give me two slots in the August class of this year, if there was one. I could call them in January. They changed that years ago. You had to be done with your testing process. You had to have a name of the person that was being hired, the date they were being hired, and their file had to be done so they could come and be audited before they would accept them. That really created a backlog for the academy, and now they're trying to get back to working, uh, with, hey, you know, you get so much, you get close enough, give me a name and, and we'll try to get them squeezed in. That's what it takes so long. It's just, it's a lot of it's out of our control.
So are we going to have to make some more purchases of cruisers if we beef up this?
Right now, right now, we got enough, and we got a few, uh, um,
Maybe older vehicles.
Cool cars, older cars. We got, I think we got four Crown Vics left in our fleet that need to go. Um, so it would be nice if we could replace, you know, those Crown Vics this coming year and get them out because they're, we, we got rid of, what's her name?
That dog still sit down there.
Huh?
That dog still down there.
But it's just ever-evolving. I mean, it's just the nature of the beast.
Okay, you had told us, I can't remember when we talked about that, that when they come on, they sign a two-year, three-year?
Three-year. They sign a three-year contract from the date they graduate the academy, they, they have to stay with you three years. Now, there's, there's a bill that's being introduced right now in the legislature that is going, trying to extend that to five years. Because so many places are having these problems. They're sending people to the academy and they're spending three years. As soon as they get their time in, they're going and looking for, you know, greener grass.
Okay, then when we have put that money in, does they have to, do they have to pay that money back?
They do, and we, we've had an occasion where someone has left prior to their, um, contract being up, and they've had to pay back the money.
Or their, their agency pays it.
Or their agency has to pay it, whoever hires them. And I don't, you know, if somebody comes to me today and says, hey, uh, I want out of my con, you know, I, I want a job. And I, generally, I tell them, I say, look, be glad to talk with you, but if you're under contract, you have to settle that contract with your agency prior to you and I getting into much, too much of a discussion here because I don't want to, you know, I just don't do that.
So, honest, uh, where you all stand as far as the, the three that we're trying to get in, how do y'all feel? Y'all good? Chance, we're good, as far as the, not as comfortable enough to? We're going to try, that's what I'm saying, two, but we'll try for the three. He's all, he don't even know if he can get the third in, but if he can.
Chance says, wait a minute, you're trying to slip one in now.
Well, I know that Kerkowski's leaving, so I know the money.
Can I get a bid for ten?
But I like that about Chance. He's, he's always, he's always keeping an eye on things.
I asked him for five and he, whoa, fell back. Um, but let's, let's see how many he can get in the academy, and then I'll let you all know. We know two for sure. We'd like to see three. We know the funding will be there next budget as far as, at least the one leaves on August first. So we're comfortable enough there, I think on that side of, so if you can get three, let's just see how many we can, we can float. As far as our other ones, we're, the ones that we've already been accepted for the thirty-five that we've all, that we approved in the budget, that's full, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so we can't have anymore. So everybody we're bringing on now will be new, new people.
And, one more thing, I'd just like to give a, um, shout out to the guys and the gals over there. They have really worked hard, worked a lot overtime, and, and, you know, they've, they've sacrificed a lot to keep us providing a quality service to our community.
Yep.
We appreciate that.
Quite a few. I think you all have had to come in a couple of times and help out as well.
You know, we've all, Captain Wells, Captain Taylor, myself, we've told them time and time again, we're available. You, you tell me when you need me to step in and, and, and come and do my, I, I work a shift, they'll work a shift. And, and these guys and gals have, um, just, they've just buckled up and, and basically won't let us work. They probably feel like you'd just be in the way, so. But anyway, they, that's, that's, I gotta, you know, they, they've stepped up to protect us and, and keep us out of harm's way, and I appreciate that.
Jeffrey, they, the, one last thing, um, the two guys, the two officers that came out of the academy, they'll be out, they'll be on their own win?
Uh, Jamal and Daniel got, I think the last, about the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh of March, I think, is their, they'll be out on their own.
Okay.
And they're doing a great job. They're two fine people.
And then we got one in the academy.
One in the academy currently.
And he'll be out.
Um, he's in week six, I think, so he's got fourteen more weeks.
All right, anything else?
Say thank you. I appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate, chief. Let the guys know we appreciate all they've done too, and girls.
Chance, you want to stay around for the next thing or? Uh, yeah. So I want to add something in before we go, because it's my fault, I, I should have had Ashley and I left it off. Um, so just real quick, I'm going to move something under three. It's basically our COVID policy, um, and talking about that. So right now, we currently are at ten days. These two here have been our, our COVID go-to people between Ashley and Chance. They've kind of kept up on this. Ashley pretty much tells Chance what to do and how to do it. Chance just does what, he just smiles right now and argues. Um, ultimately, I'll let these two kind of take over the policy about the ten versus five-day, kind of what the CDC and the changes are. So which one of y'all want to start?
Uh, you all, I guess, have a copy of the amendment?
I didn't know we already had it.
Well, I'll just talk about it as you're getting the copy there. So, um, back in February of twenty-twenty-one is when we actually formally adopted our first and, I guess, currently in effect, what we're calling COVID emergency leave, uh, policy. Um, we did that in February because the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which I guess was kind of a presidential, I guess, kind of what the right word is, order declaration, that kind of expired in, at the end of December twenty-twenty. So we needed a policy to govern how we, as a matter of payroll and human resources, you know, allow people time off with pay and what that timeframe looks like. And when we first did that, we basically continued doing that in the same guidelines that were generally in effect that had expired, December thirty-first of twenty-twenty. And that was, um, in general terms, I mean, there probably was some nuances depending on different employers. Uh, but basically, there was, you know, ten days from symptom onset, um, is what we would, ten calendar days. Doesn't mean it was ten working days or ten paid days, but ten calendar days. But depending on when that day fell on, obviously, there was, you know, employees could be off five, six, seven, eight working days. So we tried to cover everything from, you know, the employee themselves, uh, their dependent children eighteen and under because that was also ineffective of that previous act and, and, um, but as time has moved forward, and most recently, I guess, you know, CDC has updated, I guess, about a month ago, maybe, maybe two months ago now, CDC kind of updated their, their guidelines from more of a ten-day symptom onset to a five-day symptom onset. And, uh, they recommended that, you know, after five days, I don't know if it recommended or maybe that's still mandated, but, um, that for five days post, you would still be masked. So it's still ten days total, but five days, you could, after five days, you could return back to work and wear a mask for five days. So, um, we've seen, um, a lot of, as the chief just highlighted, just in the police department alone, um, over the course of the last year, and I don't have the exact numbers and that sort of thing today. But, um, just as a matter of payroll and HR, we've seen a lot of COVID cases, uh, by staff, um, over the last year and a half. So some of that, you know, I think in some departments, there's spikes, you know, they come up, they come down. But there is a cost, obviously, to the city, um, you know, to pay for, you know, those salary and wages at times when folks aren't working. We also still, you know, have sick leave for folks to use, you know, that, that we've always had a sick leave, uh, plan that, um, employees can use based on their accruals. So we thought maybe we would just, uh, might be a time, since CDC has adjusted their, um, guidelines, that we would do so accordingly, since the reason we did ours initially was to match what CDC had at that time. So the, the recommendation would be just to change the ten days to five days, um, that you could return back to work, and then you would be masked for an additional five days. Um, that basically is the only change, uh, is from ten to five. And, um, if we are able, if you all support it or however we vote on it, um, it would just basically take effect upon almost immediately as soon as you all vote on it. So it could be as early as next week or, I don't know if Ashley, if you had anything else, but I think that was kind of a thought, at least coming through HR.
But you're also, you're also changing the ten, the, the paid time off from ten to five. Your scr, because all these scratches are ten, five, ten, five, ten, five.
Basically, yeah, because CDC said the employer basically is going to, unless you have, some employers have short-term disability that kind of subsidizes, um, and we don't. So, you know, we basically have sick leave, so, you know, those ten days were paid time off by the city. Now we're saying five days paid off by the city. But anything above five, if, if you're still ill, you still have symptoms, because you still aren't supposed to return back to work if you have a fever. You have to be off a fever for twenty-four hours before you come back. So if those symptoms are still in effect, um, it's just that the city wouldn't just basically pay for you. You would use your sick leave accrual, or you could even use your accrued vacation to subsidize any sick leave you don't have. So there's still means for folks to be paid and not lose wages. It's just that we're just reducing the city portion from ten to five. Probably should have said that the first time.
Yeah.
Sorry. I know what I'm thinking, and I always say it in a way that you hear, so.
I just wanted to get them to hear that.
Yeah, thank you.
Something else I see in here is they don't have to actually have gotten COVID. I mean, it looks like there's an exposure to COVID still in the policy. So we're still, so if we have an employee that has been exposed to someone with COVID, they're going to be off for five days, is that correct?
Yeah, that would still be the same, so, yeah.
Yeah, no. Right. Right. They want to do that.
A, a lot of our people that have had direct exposures, say they work here in admin or something. A lot of them who have been vaccinated, it's happened before, we've had people who've come into the office, they call a few days later, they've paid taxes, and they said, hey, look, you know, I tested positive two days ago for COVID, I came in, I paid my taxes. So they're in their office, they're able to wear their mask for the ten days that CDC says and everything else. The problem we've run into is with the police officers, with the fire department, with the different ones like that, when they've had a direct exposure, you know, whether it be on a call or something like that, that's what they're looking at. And many of them, what they do is, they stay there five days, then they test. Once they test negative and get that negative test, then they come back.
So if they're exposed outside of work, we're not going to pay for it?
Correct.
If, if it comes back negative?
If they're exposed outside of work, no matter what, then we are not going to pay for it unless they come up positive and provide that note.
Right, yeah.
So how do we know if they were exposed outside of work?
Um, many times, the supervisors, um, will come to us and say, hey, look, we have a, um, positive test within our department, and we immediately go into contract tracing, okay, who they have been around, who have they, um, you know, who have they ridden in a vehicle with, who have they worked alongside of, and then we look at that. If they've been exposed outside of work, then, you know, and they come up positive, we're going to give them five days anyways. It's just if we know they are exposed here at work.
Yeah, most of it is. Like, uh, example would be the fire department, several weeks ago, uh, Station Two had an exposure. All, all of them had to be out. We've had it here where, um, in some of our departments where, um, someone comes home because their kid tested positive. They came to work not knowing it, kid's sick the next day, and then they, we try to figure out who they've been around that day so we can let them know. So typically, we find out like that. A lot of times, you know, if someone goes on a trip and comes back, and then a few days later, they're sick, we kind of can figure out that they were probably, it's probably because of that. A lot of it's honesty policy too.
That's what I would think, because it's hard to tell where somebody actually contacted. You could think it, it was off-duty, but then they could have touched something and then went to the door.
You just don't even know anymore. It's so. So if you're all right, and that's a policy change you have to make in the handbook, so, sorry for not, that, that's my fault. I told Ash, I didn't tell her on Friday, I'm going to have this on there, because obviously, it's no, it's no big deal. That's it. You want to stay for the last one, two, Chance, or you?
Does, does involve me?
It can.
Next is the, so Amendment Two, the alcohol beverage, this is chapter thirteen. So obviously, one of, uh, Ms. Russo's hats she wears is the ABC. It, it's interesting, because if you think back in the history of our community, um, those of us that ever crossed the bridge in Meade County to grab a beverage, can probably remember it up until about two thousand and eleven, um, when actually we, you know, mostly counting with. You never crossed, you never crossed the bridge? You know, two thousand and eleven, obviously, is when we started the alcohol, um, here in the community, uh, City of Rackliff, Elizabeth Town, and Vine Grove. So when we set a lot of these ordinances, we didn't know how things would progress, you know, how things, it was all, it was all new to us. And setting these ordinance between what Ashley worked on, Mr. Pike, getting with the ABC laws and rules. So obviously, there's some new changes to that, some amendments, and then we have a couple of questions regarding, uh, things we've been asked back at Calvin, uh, about serving alcohol there. So I'll let Ashley start with some of the changes initially, so.
So I moved down here so I could spread all my paperwork out, not overstay the layers, because I have a lot of paperwork. The first thing, if you take your, the bottom five pages off, that'll probably help you out. And then it's going to go the ordinance, and then the top three of those five pages is the, um, Paris two forty-three, oh seventy, which is the fees. And then the last two pages are called, so that'll kind of help you separate it out. So when going through the ordinance, um, some of the things that we looked at were, um, state changes. The state changed a lot of the fees and things that entered, so we automatically did that. But I'm kind of going to go through rather quickly. So if you look at page five, this has always been, um, something that's gotten a lot of questions, the building containing license premises. Um, we get a lot of questions of, hey, can we have tables out in front of our establishment? Hey, can we have, um, a place out in front of our establishment, um, that we can sell, you know, alcohol or serve alcohol and things of that nature? Well, it's completely dependent upon if you have a business that is a lone building or if it's a shared sidewalk. If it's a shared sidewalk, then state says no, you know, that you have to have certain things that, um, you know.
You can't have walkthrough.
Yeah, you can't have a walkthrough, you can't have anything. Now, if they want to have it on the back of the building, um, where it's enclosed, um, they can do that. If you look at El Molino, which is right across from Taco Bell, they have the area out in front. You know, El Smino, uh, they had a little area, uh, Mi Casita, they have the area on the side where it's contained and on the side of their freestanding building. So of course, they're able to sell in that contained area. So we get a lot of questions on that, so I just kind of wanted to hit that. So on page seven, you'll see the bond. The bond is actually no longer required by the state. So that used to be something because, um, you know, we were going in and, and helping, um, when places were shut down to count alcohol and bottles and things of that nature. And, you know, they said, you, you don't really need to be bonded because you're in your positions for a reason through your cities. So then if you go to page eleven, that's the same. So the qualifications of licensing cannot have any misdemeanor or felony directly or indirectly attributable to the use of alcohol beverages within two years preceding the application. It used to be where the states, um, made you have background checks before you could, um, have an application signed off on, and we were sent those. Now they've changed their whole procedure, everything's done online. They look up everything, so we cannot tell if that person has had any of that. So my ask to you is to put in here that they- So, my ask to you is to put in here that they have to provide us with that background check. Because ultimately, right now, if I sign off on something, I'm saying that they're allowed, you know, they don't have that conviction, but I don't know. So, my ask to you is if we could put it in there that they have to have that background check through the Rackliff Police Department and provide it to us before I sign off on their state license.
Ms. Ashley, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So where you have the, where this is highlighted, that's not really a change, because it's not being struck through. What you're saying is that is a...
It will go in right with that statement. So where it says, "One has been convicted of a felony, blah, blah, blah," must present, um, you know...
But you don't have that language in there yet?
No, that's something that if you all decide to do that, then you will let us know, and Mike Pike will write it out.
Okay, so you want to add the language here?
Yes, add the language, um, background check. Must provide a background check.
Okay. And then on this other one, where you just have a highlight, that's not a change either. You're just telling us that it's not a requirement anymore, like on page seven?
You all can decide whether you want that or not.
Whether we want there to be a bond or not? So these things that you haven't highlight, highlighted, you're wanting us to make decisions on?
Yeah, the state...
Some of them, yes, some of them, um, you know, like...
Some of them, we can't, it doesn't matter, it's the law.
Some of them are state, like mandated. So that's why you'll see the strike through and then what the state says. Like, the KRS fees, you're gonna see it says "C" note with the state fees. Those are, those are something we can't do.
Okay.
January thirty-first, those are, you know, what the, the things are now. But usually, if it's just highlighted, then it's gonna be something that, you know, if you all decide, "Yes, background checks are okay," then we would have Mr. Pike write those in there.
So the bond, where it's not requirement, who, who do we, would we want to be required to have a bond? The establishment that's asking for the license? That's what, so it says city administrator, yeah. Okay.
Many times, the city administrators were in smaller cities before.
Okay.
Um, they were not technically employees, or they were, um, you know...
Okay, that's why I was just trying to make sure that this is what...
Things of that nature, so that's why they had them bonded. But most of the time, because now, I work for the city, I've always worked for the city, I've always been the ABC administrator for the city, I fall under, you know, of course, if I do anything in any other...
Cities like that, yeah.
So...
But it's not a requirement, so we don't have, we don't have to make that a requirement?
No.
Okay.
No.
I'm just, I'm tracking with you now.
You're good, you're good. Stop me at any time. So, I'm like chance, I know what I wanna say, but sometimes it comes out. So licenses expiration date would go from June thirty to January thirty-one. We used to do it at the end of the fiscal year, when we had, we were what was considered a moist city. Um, but now that we are considered a full wet city, the state goes January thirty-first. That's when they're doing the state. So it makes it easier, because they automatically get their state license, they come in here, they get our license. So... And I'm, I'm helping to track them, "Hey, I haven't received your license or anything else." So, then, of course, page twelve, that's the fees. That's those three pages I was talking to you about. Those we will have to change, and we will replace those straight in from the PERS, so... And then, page sixteen would be... The registration, photographing, fingerprinting of employees. So, when we started this, um, you know, a lot of the places that we looked at, many of them were not wet, or they had entertainment districts or things of that nature. So, they had security that was going from one place to another. They had people that were selling alcohol in different portions. If you think of cities like Newport, where they have Newport on the levee, they were traveling constantly within that area. So they all had IDs and things of that nature. Well, we, when we wrote this, it was kind of looking at how are those going to be done? But when we have bars and things of that nature, we know they are in a contained establishment, they're not traveling from one place to another, they're stationary. This was never mandatory for waiters and waitresses and things of that nature. So, it really doesn't apply to us, so it's something that should have come out of the ordinance a long time ago, so...
When we're striking these things, we're striking them for an establishment that comes to you and says, "I wanna open a business here, and I wanna sell alcohol."
Okay.
Then this is what you're giving them or the guideline. So when we take that out, then we don't, we're not requiring that?
Right.
Right, okay.
Correct. You're not requiring them to register their security and all those kind of people, because they're not traveling between two different establishments and things of that nature.
Okay, okay.
And then, the last one should be twenty-two. So mandatory alcoholic beverage training. Many cities make it mandatory that you have the training. Some cities do not. Our city has always felt that we want to make sure that, um, people get the training they need on how to identify identification cards, how to identify, um, you know, licenses, especially the new licenses and things of that nature. Right now, you, in there, there is the option to approve it through us. A lot of places like Five Star, Minute Mart, they have their own programs. It's not the STAR program through the state. So, um, you can keep that as is, um, or you can make it so they can only have the STAR training through the state. It used to be where the state said it was just them, um, it was either them, or you couldn't, you didn't have the training at all. Um, now, you have the option of us kind of approving it like you've been doing, so that's something you all...
You approve what, the training that they give?
So, they send us the training. Um, you know, we've had like Five Stars, Minute Mart, your larger, like Walmart, things of that nature. They have so many people that, um, they have to put through training, that they have their own training programs as people come onboard. So they send me that training program, and I've been through the STAR training, so I look and see, do you, you know, does it have how to identify identification? Does it have how to, um, you know, look at IDs, determine if that ID is, you know, good or not or things of that nature, so...
That's what I was gonna ask. You're comfortable with doing that, you're familiar, obviously, with this, so you're comfortable with...
I have no problem doing it.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure you all are aware of it.
Okay.
So... So that should be it for the ordinance, unless there's something in there that you all received it, you... And some of the things that I highlighted, like the one for the license premises and things of that nature, I did that just because I have a lot of council members that ask me about that, and why don't we allow this, why don't we... So that was kind of a note to myself to bring it up, to say, "Hey, this is, this is why." So does anybody have any questions on the ordinance portion?
So, next Tuesday, or at our regular meeting, are you going to want us to the, on the parts that we're supposed to say yes or no to? Do we wanna, do we address that then and say, "We're good to leave that in, we're good to leave that out"? Should we address that on Tuesday, right?
Well, you address it now, so we know what to write in there.
Oh, okay. So we need to go back to the places that we were just talking about and say, "Leave it, don't, don't," or whatever, right? We need to do that now?
Right.
So on, um, that first page, seven, is that the first one?
Uh, yes, the bond.
So the bond, and you want us to tell you if we're gonna be good with leaving that in there or not, so you know whether to put it in on Tuesday?
Correct. It used to be required by PERS, they've taken that PERS out and said, "You don't have to be bonded anymore," so...
I mean, personally, I'm okay with not being bonded, if that's what you're wanting to know.
Your side of the city's insurance is gonna cover you anyway, so what's the point of getting additional bonding, right?
So...
I always call Mike Pike if I have a question or anything, anyway. So, you know, many of the times, it was for, you know, like I said, the smaller cities and things of that nature, so...
So, I guess five, real quick, the building, the license premise.
Oh, that was on page five.
Yeah, that was more to just kind of let them know about why it can't be across sidewalks and things of that nature. That was more of a note to myself to let them know, "Hey, this is why." This is the portion, so if somebody says, "Why can't I have this out on my sidewalk in front of my building?" You can point them directly to that and say...
Because it has to be contained.
The ordinance says you can't do it. It has to be in enclosed space on a freestanding, or enclosed space behind. It can't be across a neutral, shared sidewalk.
Just clears up responsibility and liability, that's all.
Then page eleven, where it's been convicted of a, it, you said we don't, it's online now, so we have to know if we wanna go ahead and make it to where they still show you proof?
Right. So, before the state, when they did their applications, they would put everything online. They would put the license, they would put the background check, they would put the lease, they would do all of that stuff. Now, they don't, they provide the lease, the newspaper advertisement, and the license. They no longer require a background check, because the state can just call up another state department and say, "Hey, is this person been convicted of whatever?" "No, okay, that's great." Well, I don't have that luxury unless the police department runs the background check for me. They can call the other, um, you know, state police or whoever, have that run and then sent over to them, but they don't upload it in the state.
So if we decide to say we would like to see the language in there, that we still want that required? Who, you would use, Mike?
Mr. Pike would write, just, you know, "Background check must be presented to you."
I, I think that should be added.
Absolutely.
Because technically, right now, what's happening is, I'm having to sign off on these licenses that said this person has not been convicted.
And you don't know, right?
And I have no idea.
So who's gonna do the background check?
So, the police department can do the background checks.
We have the police, or have them...
Well, I'm just curious, because I've learned from the past, when we was doing youth sports, if Rackliff Police does a background check, a lot of times, it's just gonna show up local.
But we should require them to bring their own...
Right, so, and I'm not for sure the exact difference, but there is a more in-depth background check versus than what I think Rackliff normally does.
Normally, what they, what the state used to require them is whatever state they've lived in for the past five years, ten years, um, usually, they go five years. And so they would say, "If you've lived any, in Kentucky for the past five years, you only have to present me with a Kentucky one."
Okay.
"If you've lived in Kentucky for two years, and Florida for two years, you have to provide me background checks from both of those."
Okay.
So...
This is before you issue a license?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
They're checking a lot of the states, um, when it gets to them. I'm saying for my, you know, if, if we do say for Rackliff Police Department or something like that, I'm saying for my knowledge in my city, where they've been, where they're saying they live or whatever, I've not had any convictions here. But, I mean, if you all want the state, we can mandate the state, we can mandate where it's two years or five years, or whatever, whatever state they've lived in during that time.
Or if they've lived in Kentucky less than five years?
Right.
Then just get the previous state. I think five years is a good number, because, right? Five years, so they've lived in Kentucky less than five years, then you wanna see the previous state. Otherwise, I think that's, that's plenty, to go back that. But they, let them bring it in, okay?
And we, and we have a list of where they can go to and the websites that they can go to to get those background checks. So it's not like we're just sending them all into... Because a lot of times, they'll come in and say, "Where do I need to get these?", and we always help them with those.
So we can add less than five years, and, okay. Then your other stuff was just, we're just striking it out, and I think that makes sense?
A lot of that is just state requirements and things of that nature. The background check is the main thing, and then taking out that fingerprinting, if you're all okay on, on that, so...
But now, on page twenty-two, I put yes or no. Do we want to allow you to continue to prove, which I personally am okay with you approving their, uh, training? Everybody else good with that?
I'm in agreement.
I'm fine with it.
So, then whatever you gotta do to make that?
A lot of times, it's coming from a national chain, you know, your Walmart, your Five Star.
They've already done their Walmart.
They don't want that liability on themselves, you know? We have had people who have been, um, local establishments that have wanted to write their own trainings and things of that nature, and we've gone back with them and said, you know, "Look, you have to have this and this and this in it," and they didn't wanna do that. And so, you know, so many kind of hours of training, and then they're like, "We'll just pay the twenty dollars to get started, I mean, just stay here, whatever it is," so...
The lo, local people, like not national, they can get for twenty dollars the same training that they need?
I'm not sure how much the STAR training is online now through the state. Um, you know, at one point, it was twenty, twenty-five dollars. Um, then I think it went to like forty, something of that nature. They can go online and get it through the state, and, you know, their business makes sure that they have it. And a lot of times, what this, what'll happen is when the state officer comes down, um, he'll ask, "Hey," you know, it's, the first thing he asks them is, "Did you take any type of training?" If they sell to an underage child or anything else. And so then, you know, we can say, "Yes, we do mandate it in our ordinance."
Okay.
Are they good with that one?
Yeah.
Also, nothing on the fees, right?
Nothing on the fees.
No, those are, those are just, I gave you the fees, because I want you to know what they're going to be now and things of that nature.
That's the actual fees.
Those are statutes that, you know...
But those are the fees that was on the paper, I guess.
Right. So the fees that were in there that we struck out, they'll be replaced by the ones under the PERS. We'll just take the table and move it over into there. I just wanted you to see what they were for, as opposed to what they're going to be.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, we're gonna talk a little bit about Calvin. So, over the past few years, um, we have, um, discussed what, you know, I was, actually, when we started this, I remember back, we didn't know how things would go with the alcohol being in our parks or, or systems. So most of what we did, anything alcohol-related in any of our facilities, had to be either a city function or had to be done by a licensed caterer. And so in this case, there's been several questions, and I'll hopefully be able to explain some of the differences here. But we, we're talking only about Calvin Community Center, we're not talking about any of our park system in this case. Uh, obviously, you know, right now is probably, we're not looking towards having people walk around Saunders Springs, drinking a cold one, throwing the can down in the woods. You know, that's not what we're, the direction we're looking at. We're only talking about Calvin here. So, a lot of times, people want to rent the facility that are not, um, an organization, a nonprofit, not someone looking to charge a cover charge, uh, wanting to have, um, charged by the drinks, that kind of stuff. Really, what we're talking about is people that are looking to have some sort of small wedding reception, somebody looking to have a birthday party, um, you know, whatever, a function with some family members, and wanting to be able to maybe have a beer and wine. And so, uh, I did talk with my counterparts down in Elizabeth Town, and I know that Prichard has went to that as well. And so, trying to be maybe in the same competitive, just being able to offer that, because most of the time, the people that are renting that are having a small, um, venue, they're not having it for something large. And so, where we were running into some of the issues was, uh, where they had to either rent the whole facility, which there was reasons for that at the time, and then renting a, from a caterer. Well, the, the thing that we've found over the past few years is there's not many people that have a caterer's license, and especially a local catering license, a state catering license. And then when they did have one, they were charging so much that it really wasn't worth the people trying to rent the facility back there to even try to rent the facility and then serve the alcohol and stuff who couldn't afford it. And so, looking at the ordinance and then discussing it, um, and of course, discussing with Ashley, I spoke to Mr. Pike, um, what we're looking at is, would you all consider or entertain looking at, uh, serving alcohol, which would just only be beer and wine only, malt beverages, uh, back there? We're not talking about hard distilled spirits, which is your heavy stuff, but it would only be for private parties, um, where people know their guests, they know who's coming there. There is no cover charge, uh, there is... It's not open to the public. It's not open to the public. There's no charge for the alcohol. It would only be for, like, your weddings, your, um, birthday parties and so on. And then, uh, we would have to set up, and Mike and I talked about this today, obviously, some rules and regulations that Tim would have to have them, them sign that takes some of the liability off the city for their patrons and people that are, are gonna be there. So, that just starts the discussion, I'll let you all kind of open it up, and that's kind of where we're at. And it's just something that's came up, and didn't know if anybody would be interested in relooking at that.
So they don't have to have it catered, any, right, there's no catering, and so they, uh...
Caterer's license.
They don't have to have a caterer's license?
For liquor, yeah.
Oh, for liquor, okay, and...
They still have it catered, but this caterer's license is an alcohol catering.
Catering license, okay, so they don't...
When you pay the caterer, they bring the booze in.
So, let me...
It charges a lot of money.
Let me give you an example, why don't I use a pause?
Like a bartender-type person?
So like your, your pause, uh, like your... So, like your, your pause, uh, like your organization, let's say you wanna do a benefit to raise money for, um, the, uh, yes, for animals in our, yeah, for animals in our community. For animals in our community, so you wanna have us all come, you charge us each twenty dollars, we each enter, you have a nice layout, and then you wanna have, uh, be able to serve a cocktail drink, like a, a beer and a wine. Well, in that case, you would be required to have a licensed caterer to provide that service, because you charged at the door, there's a cover charge, and then you're charging me for alcohol. In this case, this would be somebody just wanting to have a birthday party, there's twenty people as their guests, and it's mid-afternoon, they wanna have a beer and a wine, it would only be for their guests with no cover charge, and then no, um...
And they don't have to, uh, are you also gonna say they don't have to rent the entire Colvin to do that?
That's just something we have to talk about.
I think that you'd still wanna rent the whole building.
I think so, too.
Because if somebody else come in there, then you get-
Well, I rent the whole building.
Does it need to be restricted, like, so many tickets given to their guests, and that kinda thing? Like, guests get so many tickets, you know, and that's, they're limited, I mean, is that something that you can put into that?
You rent the whole building, now, what does the building hold?
Technically-
How much the building hold?
Many cities do rent the whole building, and that's mainly because when you have a-
Three hundred?
Private event, you have to know everybody that's coming in that building, if you have two events going on-
Yeah.
You're still having to charge for the basement and the upstairs, but the people in, say, the upstairs who are, who are renting it, that are gonna be having the alcoholic beverages there, are not gonna know who's going in the basement. So, then you run into, if somebody from the basement comes upstairs, grabs an alcoholic beverage, you just allow the public into that. So, that's why they maintain the thing to rent the whole building, it's gonna be, you know...
Okay.
That makes sense.
Unless you did a wristband-type of thing, that you couldn't get-
How much did you say the whole building rent for?
How many hopes?
No, no, how, how much to rent the whole building?
For four hours, if you're a Rackliff resident, it's one seventy-five per downstairs, and one seventy-five per upstairs.
So, three fifty for the whole building, which is cheap to get a-
For a Rackliff resident.
I think, um, Pritchard, when I was looking, was like fourteen hundred for the whole building?
Right.
And, um, you also have, you have to rent the whole building there as well.
And you don't have to pay extra for tables and chairs when you pay that one seventy-five?
Yeah, that's-
That's good, I mean, that's good, 'cause it, you normally have to pay even for every chair, every table. Um, on number seven, which is, I guess, your new number seven, no later than thirty days prior to the event, a security plan must be submitted by the, a renting party for the event. Um, what, what type, how would I know what that plan looks like?
Well, here's-
You got guidelines for that?
Well, here's what we talked to Mr. Pike about.
Okay.
Um, so, one of the things, I think, we have that in there, I think, first of all, the, when Tim knows that Joe out here is gonna rent the facility, there's gonna be a form that Joe has to fill out specifying, and there's already a rental form, but we just have to add some of the alcohol language and like-
Right, okay.
Second thing would be, there has to be a co- point of contact person, so whenever one of his employees is gonna be, whether whoever Frank, um, um, him or Alicia is there, and something goes wrong, they need to know their, who the contact person downstairs will be to address that issue. Um, that, you know, if it's Joe's party, and so-and-so's getting messed up over here, and just had a little bit too many, and they noticed it, there needs to be a point of contact person for that individual to be the one to address that, that portion. Um, the reason the city police department, of course, with the police department being right next door is one thing, uh, we're not expecting them to have a security guard standing there, and then paying somebody fifty dollars an hour, or thirty dollars an hour, just to stand there. But there has to be some measure of point of contact, who that person is, and then who the responsible party's gonna be for any issues that may occur.
Which, that, I mean, I think that, oh, my only thing was, if, if we gave them the, are you gonna give them the form, and then they're just gonna return it back in in thirty days? That's the one, I mean, that's the only thing I'm saying, like, I'm gonna come in, I'm gonna get the form-
You know, like, the, right now, the, like, parades and walks and things of that nature, what we do is, we say, okay, here, who is our point of contact?
Right.
How many people are going to be there?
So, basically, you're gonna write the, write the questions out, or the plan that they need, and I'm gonna get, fill it out, and bring it back to you within thirty days.
You just fire it for this. When things start to go wrong.
Right, that's, that's good, that's what I'm saying, so that, yeah.
If you start, if you start allowing, um, say, you have a, the events there for Forever Home for Pauls, who's gonna be in charge of making sure that somebody is there taking those tickets? Who's gonna be making sure that people do not need to go outside of the alcohol, because the alcohol cannot go outside the doors, that type of thing? And we would work with people through that, we're not just gonna be like-
That's what I was saying, 'cause if you ask me to give you a plan, I'm like, what does, what does that look like? But you're gonna give them the guidance, here's what this plan looks like, and you just gotta turn it back in, that makes good sense, it makes it easy for people to get the application or the plan.
We can be standardized.
Yeah, standardized, there you go, standardized, that's all it's saying, okay, that's good.
So, somewhere, I would like to see that the alcohol has to be watched over, or some, you know, someone standing there by the cooler, or, or by the wine, that's twenty-one years of age, not, not a... I mean, it could be anyone in the family or whatever, but just making sure that the eighteen-year-old kid don't come up there, or, you know, somebody come and grab alcohol, or-
I think you can put, can you put language in there, Mike, that says-
In your plan.
Obviously, you know, we, I don't know, I can't walk up to Tosh, how old are you? But something in there that says, um, all guests, or patrons, whatever the correct word would be, of, uh, have to ensure that any alcohol served is, uh, being basically consumed by-
Whoever the applicant is, they are responsible.
Yes.
Right.
They can either delegate, and, and it's probably a good idea to have them list, who is in charge of it, of the alcohol? But if, if they're running a party, and the eighteen-year-old nephew goes up and sneaks a beer, I, you know, I'm not sure how you police that.
But if it's caught, they have to-
They have to address it and deal with it.
Yep, and if not, the party can be terminated next year.
Yeah.
We'll lose that.
And if it's going out the back door-
Right. And I think the city, the city reserves the right at any time to cease to, yeah, yeah, you know, the-
And shut the party down.
Right.
If the party's starting to go out in the parking lot, it's over.
Right.
Now, the other thing I wanna ask, just to be clear, 'cause, not that I've ever attended one of these kinda parties, but if there's a keg, are we, are we gonna address whether people can bring bottled beer? Well, I say bottled and canned beer, of course, keg takes it to another level.
I would say, in that case, all alcohol, beer or wine, served to the guests should be served in, like, plastic cups or something like that, it should, you can have canned beer in a cooler, pour it into the cup when you hand it to them. I've seen that done a lot, and it's safer, and like, where I'm from, in New Orleans, it's a hundred dollar fine if you're caught walking down the street with a can of beer. You can have a, a plastic cup of beer, you can have a milk carton full of wine, but you cannot have a glass of can.
Glad you told me that, I'm, I'm gonna make a trip down there.
I mean, basically-
He's gonna test that theory.
You're trying to-
But you can't have a keg.
You're trying to say if you can have a keg or not have a keg.
Obviously, all right, I'm asking is, um-
You're not gonna have anybody walking out with a keg drinking. What would be the, I mean-
I don't see how you can differentiate that, really, I mean-
All right, I'm asking, when I have a keg, I know I'm having a pretty good party, there's a lot of people gonna be drinking, there's two hundred fifty-six drinks in a keg, so, um...
There's how many?
Two hundred fifty-six.
Where'd you get that number, JJ?
I remember the number.
Two hundred and fifty-six glasses of beer.
You can regulate how they, how their, how their beer and wine comes.
And Tim will call me, Tim will get a call, and he'll say, hey, well, obviously, we see the city's done that, we'd like to do that, we're gonna bring a keg, he is gonna call me, and I mean, you would call me and ask, hey, they're wanting to bring a kegs, I wanna make sure that I know that answer, what this body wants, 'cause it will be a question comes up, and I just wanna be able to say, well, they didn't discharge from me, I just-
Well, I mean, I-
If you're all right-
You're in the whole cooler, what you do.
That's what I'm saying.
I'd be all right with it, because usually, it's gonna be served in cups, which, you get away from the, you know, arguing with them about bottles and glass.
My question's gonna be, is everybody got soda, if, if it is no cups, it would be easier, or whatever, if they're walking out the front back door, are they gonna know what they got?
Uh, all, all, all beverages stay inside, I mean, why would they be outside with a soda? Because that's just gonna create bug problems for us if they spill it and everything, so...
Say, you can burn downstairs, you got, once you get there, you're gonna plan on the basketball court and playground.
No, no, no-
We're not downstairs to watch them go out the back door.
Right.
Well, the, the better rule is, no drinks, leave the premises.
Right, right.
So, does the premises include the basketball court, tennis court, playground?
Yes.
Yes.
Outside.
No, no drinks lead to bill, leave the building.
Right, you leave the building, yeah. So, it just needs to be, we've just gotta make sure that the, the paper says, all drinks need to remain inside.
Well, because when you're renting Cal- Colvin for a party, you're not, you're, are they getting that space? Are they getting the space of the, of the outside, are they getting the courts? Right, so you're just, right, so, I just clear that, make that language clear, you're inside.
What you have is, somebody goes out, and wanna have a smoke break, they'll walk out the back door, they'll smoke, they'll hold their cup, walk around, I mean, that's, you know, and that, they're, it just happens, I mean, it is, yeah.
Okay.
But you all, I mean-
Tim, Mr. Pike, and Ashley?
From discussion-wise, how do you all feel about it, I mean, that's just something-
That's, that's competitive to what the rest, where Pritchard done, has done, that we do, and Vine Grove has the same kind of board, and so, it'll just make it uniform across the city.
Right.
So, they don't think you do one thing in Vine Grove, and one in your town, and one thing over here.
And that we understand, though, organizations, like Forever Homes and Pauls, a five oh one C three wants to have that, um, and they charge a cover, they wanna charge for alcohol, they still have to have a licensed caterer. We're only talking about the birthday parties, the wedding receptions, the, um, baptisms.
Right, but those should also include no cans and, and bottles, 'cause that caused problems. It should also contain no glass and, uh, no cans, because that caused problems, you know, clean up.
Well, I think what we'll do is last break-
Out the door, party's over.
How often do we have glass bottles back there? Do we have anything glass, ever, bottle-wise? Root beer, anything like that, we just, okay?
Out the door, party's over, put you in there.
And that goes again, beer and wine only, no hard liquor. Colvin only.
Out the door, party over.
Are you gonna allow distilled spirits with the caterers there?
Yeah, I think distilled spirits with a licensed caterer is different, yeah. This is just for private parties.
Has anybody ever done, have we had somebody just called in with a catered distilled?
No, because we recently, until last year, had no caterers within the city of Ragland.
Yeah.
And recently, we have, um, last year, a caterer came in and got a license, and so...
That's where you, you came in. So, and then you wanna rent, get the caterer, you know, obviously, they, they have to charge, I think, the number's so much, that people just was not knowing.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, that brings us to the end.
You go, Ashley, go. Go, Ashley, go. Ask me, I don't know.
I don't have anything.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing.
She does straighten that mic out, she does.
Okay, the Harden County NAACP presents Black History Month, weekly virtual events featuring leaders and students from our community. That stars tomorrow night, February the eighth, would be prestigious African-Americans and white activists portrayed by area students, also, a presentation on black inventors. Next Tuesday, which is February the fifteenth, presentation from black-owned businesses and leaders in Harden County. February the twenty-second, Texas history teacher Eugene Hall on laws that affects African-Americans from the formation of America to the present. Also, a presentation on career exploitations up for youth. This is gonna be online, if you want, i- if you're interested, we got a H, uh, that you can go to HTTPS, floor slash, floor slash, USO, two web dot zoom dot US slash J slash eight seven six nine two eight one two seven seven two. And also, the Harden County reminder, the Harden County NAACP is presenting their thirtieth annual NAACP Freedom from Banquet and Unity in Diversity on Saturday, April twenty-third at six PM. Reason why we wanna bring this out, they are going to have, and it's gonna be a black tie event, seventy-five dollars, at Pritchard, four zero four South Murberry Street. And you get your tickets available at Eventbrite. But reason why we wanted to bring this out, because they will be giving, uh, together in peace, inducing induction of Tanya Seabrook, a former, um, city councilwoman on social justice impact award. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Um, Tuesday, the fifteenth, is the Rackliff Small Business Alliance General Membership Program, that'll be at, uh, noon at Colvin. And our RSBA Connect, which is a networking social event that's open to the public, will be held at Kickin' Pizza, our, uh, one of our Rackliff businesses on one twenty-five West Lincoln Trail, and that is Tuesday, the twenty-second, from five to six. Oh, I'm sorry, Tuesday, the tw- uh, twenty-second of February, is the RSBA Connect, Kickin' Pizza.
Yeah, we went through two, two, twenty-two, then we got two, 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 two. It's just something that's just on my mind. You got anything?
Uh, sorry, the Goodwill Industries of Kentucky is conducting a virtual expungement course or class on February tenth, from ten AM to eleven thirty AM. They hope to get as many as seventy-five participants, but they'll take whoever enters the room. If you need more information about this event on February tenth, at ten AM to eleven thirty AM, Eastern Standard Time, just go to the Goodwill Industries of, of Kentucky's website.
Uh, just a thought for the city, from what I understand, uh, Saunders Spring have pretty good water, and I'm wondering, why don't we bottle that water and sell it? Used to be, I don't know.
It used to.
Well, why don't we do it again, I mean, I don't know, just a thought.
Might as well Tim go down there and take your barometer, what's that thing you own, go down there and test the water, see what comes back with.
From what I understand, it's supposed to be pretty good water. Isn't that Rackliff drinking water also?
It used to be, I don't know, uh, Purtle Springs is the, uh, one now, that's out near the Meade County, Harden County line, that's where the plant is now.
Right.
But years ago, it's where it was.
Right, but I'm not saying just sell it to the sales, and bottle it, ship it out. It's an idea.
And bottle what you got. Yeah, thank you. Is that it?
Yeah. I just wanna remind everyone that this Saturday is the North Harden Baseball Banquet, uh, it was the one that was rescheduled, it is at six PM at, uh, North Harden High School. And that's all I have.
Um, just a quick reminder that, uh, February nineteenth is the annual mayor's breakfast, and so, look forward to having that again, I know several of y'all have already signed up to have a booth, and, well, obviously, still take door prizes, we're working on that this week, um, so that'll be next. Um, if February fourteenth, right around the corner, for all you, you people that have forgotten. So, and, yeah, I know Tosh has got her red on, so just a reminder, I think it's, is that Monday or Tuesday? It's Monday?
Monday.
So, uh, just a reminder, if you haven't gone out and got something, just remember to do that, and then the last thing is Hoot Day, y'all know who Hoot Day is?
Mm-hmm.
Y'all know who Hoot Day is?
The Bengals.
The Bengals, be playing this Sunday, so, always been a Bengals fan, so hopefully, they'll pull through, so, we'll see what happens.
I've always been a Hoot Day.
Hoot Day, Hoot Day.
In New Orleans.
All right, thank you all, good meeting, uh, our next meeting will be scheduled for, uh, February fifteenth at six thirty, up here at Rackliff City Council, that'll be our regular scheduled council meeting, and so, with that, we are adjourned, thank you all.